Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to another exciting meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the first of April 2019. Meeting is now in order, and could we have a flag salute, please? Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, okay. Thank you. All right. Staff is here, council's here. We can go to work. Additions to the agenda, I don't see any, I don't hear any. Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, general hatreds. No, I've got one. I met last Friday with Mr. Jones and Mr. Fleishman in a discussion about revising the RV park ordinance. And that was, that was the subject. And that's it. So, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It's not a secret, but I was the chairman of the 1019 Committee to address that particular ordinance. I'm just throwing it out there, shouldn't sway me in any way, I'm just letting everyone know that's on hand.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I was also present for the last two iterations of that committee. It will not sway my vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Others? Okay, let's go to presentations, comments from the public. James McGrawry. You got your three minutes. Go ahead on it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm there to speak opposition to the smoking ordinance that I feel is a hit, you might say, on my civil liberties, or everybody's civil liberties. We have a right to smoke, and when we smoke, we don't go around blowing everybody's face and make a menace of ourselves. We've been talking about this issue for, what, almost a year now? And they were gonna do something, they didn't do it. They finally, I guess they had a meeting, and they got these proposals to amend. They were, I myself would prefer to see it completely rescinded. Like I say, it should not be decided by the City Council if you're gonna infringe upon somebody's civil liberties. It should go to the general public. Put it on the ballot. Let the people decide. That's of the people, by the people, for the people. But taking away somebody's civil liberty has to be decided by the public. I've spoken very vehemently in the past against this, and I'd like to continue to, you all have that feeling, but I think it's our right.
Thank you for the last. Okay, thank you, James. Steve Poizan.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for having me here. My name is Steve Poizan. I'm the president of Revitalize Downtown Staton. I live at 1750 East Pine Street here in Staton. In the fall of last year, I made a presentation to the council regarding a specific issue related to ordinance 1019. Since we now have new council members, I would just like to review that recommendation for the benefit of those new councilors as you consider the recommendations presented by the ordinance 1019 review committee today. As the council grappled with the effects of the smoking ordinance portion of 1019, the owner and staff of Mick &amp; Moms were particularly vocal about the hardships the ordinance would place on their business. In the fall, several members of RDS spoke with Mr. Wu, the owner, and Samantha, his manager, about their concerns. At one particular council meeting, Mr. Wu and I spoke to the council proposing a solution to their concerns. Mick &amp; Moms is in a geographically unique situation as compared to any other business in the downtown area. The building extends from the edge of the front sidewalk to the edge of the rear alley, and thus leaves no alternative space for his smoking patrons to congregate. We requested that Mick &amp; Moms be given the use of an underused, single parking space in the public lot across the alley from the business. The 1019 review committee made the same recommendation. We were confident the city would find a way to legally handle this use, and this situation is unique enough that would not present any unique precedent, other than one that says the city is willing to work with merchants and citizens when unique situations exist that do not conform with existing ordinances. The recommendations from staff that have been presented in the packet today regarding the recommendations from the committee have listed three concerns about granting this proposal. One, the smoking area would lose one parking space when changes to off-street parking this summer will increase demand for off-street parking. We do not believe that the loss of one space will make an overall difference in the public experience of the parking situation. The loss of one parking space by RDS for the parklet will offset this one space that is lost. We will go from two spaces to one this summer. If the city is able to meet the needs of the business in another way, I'm sure the business would welcome other reasonable suggestions. The number two disagreement that the staff has is that the designated smoking area would primarily benefit one business. As I stated earlier, this business is in a truly unique situation without another feasible alternative. Additionally, the owner has documented smoking on sidewalks by most of the business employees on this block, and they will all have the option to comply with the new ban by using this space. Additionally, the issue being addressed with the ordinance is not the behavior of the business, but the desire of the public to have a smoke-free passage on the public sidewalk, which will encourage pedestrian traffic in that area. And the number three concern of the city staff is, as a healthy, eating, active-living community, staff questions whether the city should be facilitating tobacco consumption. While this initiative is an admirable one, I'm confident the city could initiate more effective programs to align with this designation than depriving a business of options to retain customers in an industry where smoking is often associated with their business. I am not aware of this community designation being actively promoted by the city, so I do not see this solution as a contradiction. Once again, I encourage you to be sure the ordinances you pass are for the benefit of the majority, but compassionate for individuals that suffer undue hardship by its passage. Mick &amp; Moms has been a fixture downtown for over 70 years and deserves to have its needs respected even when public sentiment over an issue such as smoking changes with the times. Mr. Wu agrees with banning smoking around doorways. He just wants an option that will allow him to comply without losing business. I believe you have the power to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Samantha Jones.
I had planned to read a letter, but Steve pretty much covered it pretty well. Ninety percent of our customers are smokers. And even though I personally don't agree with having my civil liberties taken away from me, my personal choice taken away from me, and not being able to smoke on a public street where my own children have been deployed to defend our rights. I'm not, I don't like a dictatorship at all, and that's what this feels like. But as far as our business goes, ninety percent of our customers are smokers. We've been around to the other bars, and they have property to build smoking areas on. We don't. And if you look at the picture, our only option, if you take this 20 feet, that 20 feet is gonna take us on the other side of the alleyway into that parking lot. And at the 10 feet, you're asking us to have our customers smoke in a non-covered area next to pressurized gas lines and garbage cans. Our whole alleyway is lined with garbage cans. Nobody, not a smoker, not a nonsmoker, not anybody, should have to go stand next to a garbage can. We'd just like you to hear. We'd just like you to do something about it. And, you know, we have six full-time employees at Mick &amp; Moms, and we're not your local bar that promotes drug addicts and thieves and, you know, we're a bar that does fundraisers for our customers when they get in need. You know, we're just a down-home little bar, and we want to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Nora Anderson.
Hi. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nora Anderson. I'm the newest employee at Mick &amp; Moms. I used to work at Rumors, so I've been involved with the smoking ordinance for a while. I am also the wife of a Vietnam veteran who suffers from Agent Orange, and I smoke to relieve my tension and my stress. To take away somebody's liberty, especially somebody who, my husband is dying from Agent Orange, who is dying for this country, and yet you want to, you want to take our liberty away? This is a democratic society. So, I say, I love the idea of taking one parking place, covering it, and having that smoking area of everyone who works in the area. That is a great solution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nora. Dan Setnickor. Good evening.
My name is Dan Setnickor. I live at 1339 West Washington. And I'm here to talk about the trail that is being built on the other side of Norpak there, between Norpak and Ida Street. It's gonna connect from Evergreen to West Washington Street. First, I'd like to say that we are avid users of trails around Staton. We happen to frequent Riverfront Park and walk our dog down there and so forth. I think that's a great place for one. Unfortunately, over the last year, we've had an unreal amount of uptick in crime in our neighborhood. I've lived in my current house 23 years, and up until the last year, we had no issues at all. And now my neighbors are putting up cameras, vehicles are getting broke into. My vehicle, they attempted to steal it twice last month, seven days apart. Last Monday, my neighbor, somebody tried to break into his house, and they stole some items off his porch. Sunday morning, the Adams Storage Lot behind us, there was some suspicious activity over there. So basically, what I'm trying to say is, I feel that the trails really belong in park-like settings, not through residential areas. And I do have a lot of respect for state and business. I'm employed here in town myself, but I really strongly disagree with the people behind this, thinking that these trails are gonna, you know, bring people to Staton. I mean, I myself would not want to drive some distance, come to Staton, and walk along a creek that borders an industrial park and some residences. So, through my experience of theft and crime over the last year, we've lost a lot of sleep and a lot of money. I happen to live close to A&W, and I see the railroad tracks there being used as a means of escape. I've witnessed people running through the field and running down the railroad tracks. And the police officers at night, I mean, I gotta give them credit, they do a good job, but there's typically one of them around, and they've told me flat out that they aren't gonna get out of their car and chase some guy down the railroad tracks. All they can really do is wait at one end or the other. Well, I'm pretty sure they don't come out the other end. They're going over a fence or under a fence or what have you. So I just, I'm here tonight because of the Planning Commission, and I testified at that meeting. And I understand their criteria, which they base their decision on, they approve the trail, and I respect it, I do. And I've been advised by the city staff that I can appeal this, but also that City Council will base their decision on the same criteria that the Planning Commission did. So, before I went to the Planning Commission, I took a whole Sunday afternoon, and I walked around just where this trail is. And I, in about three hours, I met a lot of good people that really restored my faith in this community. I gotta say that. But I got four and a half pages of people that feel the exact same way I do. And these aren't businesses, but residences around this trail. So, to keep this brief, I know my three minutes are now up, I would just like to know, is there a way that the City Council can consider this on other grounds than the Planning Commission did, based on what a lot of citizens in this town desire? Based on safety? Based on a trail entering a busy street that has little-to-no sidewalks? I mean, there's a lot of safety concerns, I think, and I could go on and on for quite a while, but I would just like some advice, I guess. And I appreciate your time.
Dan, I think it could probably be a future agenda item. I, whatever the, you know, whatever the progress, I don't know what the, not the situation, where the, where that consideration is as far as the Planning Commission goes. I don't know if it's been brought forth. Mr. Fleishman, can you enlighten us a little bit?
Last Monday night, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and approved the site plan review application of the State and Area Rotary Club. I believe council was notified of that decision by email, as was the applicant and all of the neighbors that testified. So there's a 14-day appeal window, or that a counselor could call up the decision. That's the status of the site plan application.
Okay, okay. So that would come to the council, what, in the next month?
It would only come to the council if a council member calls it up, or if a participant in the Planning Commission's hearing files an application for an appeal.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Dan, is that it?
So just, so I'm clear?
It's in the, in the works.
It's in the works.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So it sounds like it wouldn't come to the council if no one calls it up. What would be the benefit, like, I'm just, I'm new to this process, and so I'm wondering what would be the benefit? How would that help if we did call it up here? Because it sounds like it would just stay and move forward, and nothing else would happen.
Dan?
I'm just curious.
If a member of the council were to call it up, then the council would take jurisdiction over the land use application. And you would be looking at the application, conducting your own hearing, and making your determination as to whether the criteria for approval under the land use code are met or not met.
Using the same criteria as the Planning Commission, is that correct?
The council, past councils, have adopted a code that says, these are the criteria by which this type of application are judged. And if you want your decision to stand up if it's appealed, then you may apply only those criteria.
Yeah. And so there's nothing else that could be considered, like, on the site plan review, not just the land use, but the actual site? Because there's like the site.
The site plan review is the application of the land use code.
Okay, all right.
Here we go. We're still in comments from the public, so let's move on if we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, Eugene Jones.
He has left.
He left? Okay, all right. Well then, let us go to the consent agenda for March 18th City Council Minutes and OLCC, Oregon Liquor Control Commission Limited On-Premises Application for Roth's IGA Foodliner. What would you folks like to do with this? Yes.
May I offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Okay.
A second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted? And everyone's had a chance to look at that? So, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Hearing no opposition, we'll declare the motion passed, and we'll go on to that next item beyond the consent agenda, which was the liquor license for Roth's IGA. Well, it's, it should have been, well, I thought so too, but here it is as a separate item, so. We can ask Rich to comment on it, but we don't have to. Okay, moving right along. And, where in the heck is that agenda for tonight? Why can't I, here it is. Child abuse prevention proclamation and presentation, business from the mayor. City of Staton, Marion County, Oregon, this is a proclamation, then we're gonna hear from some of the folks sponsoring this. And I've got it right here. This matter came before the City of Staton Mayor and Council at its regularly scheduled meeting of April 1st, 2019, to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment, whereas in 2017, there were 11,077 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon. And of those reported cases, 1,047 were victims in Marion County, and 47 of those were from Staton. Whereas, we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our county by providing opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers, by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, I as the mayor, City of Staton Mayor, and I ask councilors, ask everyone to join together in protecting our children, and do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, dated this, at Staton, Oregon, this first day of April 2019, by my signature, Henry Porter. So, there's the proclamation. And now, Kelly? And should we get Ashley and Terry up there with you? Okay?
Everything works, thank you, Elizabeth. So again, my name is Kelly Pross. I'm representing the Marion County Child Abuse Prevention Committee. I happen to work for Liberty House. I'm not gonna talk about Liberty House today. I'm here representing about 20 agencies. Today, I have Ashley Kadot from Marion County DA's office. I have Teri Alexander from Safer Families, I'm gonna get it wrong, Save Families with Catholic Community Services. But there is a number of agencies that come together, and thank you so much, number one, for proclaiming this month Child Abuse Prevention Month for Staton, and also for taking some time to let us share some of the reasons why we've become so passionate about this, and we want to make a change. These are the organizations that have come together again this year, we've added some. We don't work together generally, except during this month, where we've worked together to create a calendar for there's things for families to do, ways for people to get educated about ways to prevent child abuse. If you've made it into downtown Salem, actually just last week, we got all the blue ribbons up on the tree. We've done this every year for many years. The big tree in front of the State Capitol has that, those ribbons representing over 11,000 confirmed cases of child abuse in the state of Oregon in 2018. This is so fun, because I get to ask somebody from the DA's office to pass papers out. So, Ashley has some invitations to the kickoff. We have an official kickoff that all those agencies come together, and so I think she's gonna hand them out to our council members here. There's also a website you can go to to get more information about what's on the calendar. We are meeting at our Salem Business Area Chamber of Commerce is meeting at the State Capitol in Room 50 for their greeters meeting, and then we'll go up to the Capitol steps and have a short program that just brings together again us together in one place to kick off this month of focusing on this. So again, those are those numbers. They're staggering. They are down a little bit from last year, but quite honestly, if I'm talking specifically about sexual, child sexual abuse, which I do often, about 90% of those cases never get reported. So I don't mean to bring us down, but I want to be real. So we need to learn how to talk about this so that we can make a difference at some point. I think what hurts our hearts in many ways are several aspects, but one I'll point out here is that 45% were younger than the age of six years old. So we have a list of people that are really awesome at responding to this issue. Law enforcement, teachers, Liberty House, DHS hotline, medical providers, those are mandatory reporters, and they take that job quite seriously. Probably 80%, and maybe a little higher, of confirmed child abuse cases come out of a mandatory report. But imagine a community where the focus is prevention. So if we read through this list, spend time building relationships with the children in your lives. Parents and adult members, mentors are important. Get trained on how to talk to children about, I can't read backwards all of a sudden, about the right language to use, build those relationships, and learn the signs of abuse. Often, they don't show. It often is a change in behavior. Support organizations that foster prevention trainings. Join in community efforts that focus on family and children heard. Prevention happens because you take the time to take the action. So what will you do? Ashley is gonna pass out some "I Will" posters that we have, I left some on seats too. I even have pens, if you want to write on them. But we'd asked you to do this last year, this is our call to action, it's a simple moment in time, to just stop and think, what could you do to make a difference in the life of a child? There's actually suggestions on the back, but you may come up with your own. I won't embarrass anybody but asking you to hold up your sign, or asking you what you would write. But I do ask you to take it seriously and write something on there, and put it on your office door or whatever this month, and start a conversation. So that's the back of this sheet. If you ride the bus in downtown Salem, there's, these are on the inside of the bus, Parenting is Messy. Those are all those agencies on there again, with some direction on if you need some help, we want to be able to, we want to be there to help you. Everyone has a role in preventing child abuse. And so I'm gonna give you an example of an actual activity that you can do. Teri's gonna finish this up unless there's some questions, which usually there aren't, and to introduce you to something that you could actually participate in soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Teri Alexander. I work with Save Families for Children. That's administrative, administrator is Catholic Community Services. I brought some posters, flyers about conferences that were having. I brought some posters, flyers about a conference that we're having, and it's an Oregon conference, it's pretty exciting. Safe Families for Children provides respite for kids when families are in temporary crisis. So it's families that are under resourced, maybe high poverty, but we wanted to help those families that are usually in isolation before the neglect and abuse occurs. It's about pushing it out in the community, we refer to this as a social movement, and so I encourage you to email us, and I can send you more information. The conference is going to be, we're going to have Peter Courtney there, he, Senator Peter Courtney, he passed a bill in 2011 that allowed Safe Families to come to Oregon, and then also Fairbores, who is the manager or the director of DHS statewide, will be there as well, because we're starting a pilot demonstration project with DHS, so over the next three years in 12 counties in Oregon, that is going to concentrate on prevention of child abuse. So I really encourage you to take a look at that, and if you email me, I'd be glad to send you more information. We can all be a part of keeping kids safe and healing our families and the community. And I know New Growth Ministries and Stateon started a teen center here, and they are partners with us as well, with Safe Families, so you could always contact them about Safe Families, so we're pretty excited about that, and I think together as a community, we can make a difference in our communities. And I encourage you all to take a look at that, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for being here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yo!
Not a question, but a comment. So I, my first service, is it Service Integration Team meeting, you spoke about Safe Families, and I was really impressed with the program, so thank you. I encourage anyone to learn a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I also would like to say, as the spouse of a woman who spent the better part of her professional life devoted to this cause, thank you for what you do. I know what it's like, I know the sacrifices some of you make, and my hat goes off to you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Council. Alright, we don't have any public hearings tonight, unfinished business, City Council Goals. The staff report is from our city manager, Keith Campbell, and Sarah Singer-Wilson. So, Sarah, you've got it.
Well, good evening, Mayor Porter, and members of the council. I understand that there were some questions that came up about the process regarding the goal summary at the last meeting, and I reached out to staff and made myself available to council to have any clarifying conversations, but I did put together a memo to try and just review the process that we underwent. I know it can be complicated to try and work with a group in one day to set all the goals, and so as you recall, back on February 2nd, there were lots of post-its up on the wall, and so we took all of those and went back and tried to summarize them. And so one of the outcomes that you had expressed, or one of the goals of the session, was to come up with goals that are specific and achievable. So in going through some of those post-its, there are some that were more like value statements, there were some that really illustrated like broad overarching goals, some that were specific goals and actions, and so we tried to take all of those and distill it down. And this is the same process that I use with all of the cities that I work with in doing council goal-setting, and any kind of strategic planning for that matter. It's, you know, trying to distill all of the input that you receive, whether working with a governing body, or working with community groups and community members, and trying to synthesize all of that information into some goals and actions that are specific and are achievable. So following the session that we held on February 2nd, I went and met with staff, and we went through all of that language and tried to distill those down, and as I shared in the memo that was provided to you, there were some that felt somewhat duplicate, and so I, so those got summarized, I know there were, I watched the video from the last meeting, and Counselor Hook, I understand that you had some questions as far as where did a specific goal go, and I hope that the memo tried, explained some of that, but I'm here tonight to try and answer questions and be responsive, and this is really, this is a draft document. So, again, one of the things we talked about during the session was assuming positive intent, and that's what, that's certainly what the staff and I had in putting this together, and really trying to create something that's useful to guide the council as you set forth to really serve your community well this year. So, I certainly want this document to be something that serves you well, and so at this point, I just, I'd like to answer any questions that you have, or try to understand, again, it's taking a lot of information from one day and trying to make sense of it all and come up with a summary that feels useful for both the organization and for the council. So, at this stage, I just would like to take any questions or comments that you have.
Mr. Mayor?
There should be some comments, go ahead.
Sarah, thanks so much for coming down, by the way, and I truly enjoyed our goal-setting, it was a great experience. For me, and I can't speak for anyone else, I just feel like part of what was missing is, we had a really, kind of a traumatic experience in our community where it had to do with processes of starting small businesses, and making that streamlined. And so I know that was something that we had talked about in our goal-setting, it was a post-it that was put up there. I don't see that encompassed in here, and I think it's super important that it is, it is a specific goal, it is achievable, and I would like to see it incorporated in here. Same with.
Can I respond to that one first?
Of course, yes, of course.
Okay, let's just take them one by one, so that we get through them. So for that one, in the discussion, and again, we can, we can do the, change the language, whatever works best for you guys. We did have some conversation with, about that specific one with staff, and one of the things that we talked about was the economic development strategies, and through the Economic Development Strategic Plan, that that would be something that would come up under that, in that first, it's one of the short-term actions under supporting economic development, and so that would certainly, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be something that would come under that Economic Development Strategic Plan. So that comment by no means was disregarded, but if it needs elevation by calling it out separately, that's, that's where it would come under. So, that was our thinking, and again, sometimes the words just get lost in translation, so I have point taken, and if the council wants that elevated, then we could certainly add that as an action under supporting economic development, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just feel like it was impactful enough in our community that it should definitely be called out, so the community knows that we are focusing on that, so that in the future, when people are coming through, we can say, hey, this is one of our goals, we're working on it, and that it really is at the forefront as a goal.
Okay, sorry, so that was the, that was the first one? What was the next one?
The next one had to do with process improvement for tracking and documentation, and that one comes, came up as something that we talked about, because there's been a lot of things that have kind of like fallen off the plate, and then all of a sudden, they get brought to council, and it's like, oh, we didn't, we didn't know that this was in here until we pulled out this file, like conditions of approval that just got missed and were never implemented. And so they come back 20 years later, and so it'd be nice to have, have that as a goal, to make sure that we have a clear process in place of when we approve something, here we're going to flag these, how are we doing that, and letting the community know that the decisions that we make now aren't going to come back to bite us 20 years from now because we have an action plan, and we have people following up on that. I feel like it's, a lot of the issues we've had recently, from past decisions, past councils, past city managers, have not helped build a strong relationship with our community members. And so just letting the community know, yes, in the past they messed up, we're not going to do that. And this is how. So I feel like that's an important one to also specifically call out, because it is attainable.
So, I know, do you see that, do you envision it under one of the goal areas that we've, is that, there's there an area where you feel like it specifically fits?
So that, that's actually why I thought we had the improved processes goal, I think that was one of them, I'd have to like look it up here, but.
Well, under that goal, and I, I understand this is where there was some confusion, because I have that one up here too, because I knew you were probably going to have some questions for me about that, but under that, there were several, you know, there was like something about gold standard and best practices, there was transparency, and then there was this other piece about perception of city government and improving communication. So there were, there was also another thing under there, under, you know, improving the branding and perception of the city. So there was kind of a mishmash of actions or ideas that were placed under improved city processes, and so that's where it, the wording that we selected was improve communication and outreach, and I think you could maybe put some process stuff under there. That's certainly where we put, there were also a whole string of items around meetings, and council, council rules update, and the agenda order, and things like really related to council process, and so that's covered in this complete the update of council rules. So again, it's, it's just depending on the level of detail you want to get into underneath these goals, and I'm happy to, again, at the pleasure of the council, whatever makes the most sense, but some of those process things related to council were captured under that action of complete the update to council rules, and if we need a separate one, we can certainly put something around process improvement, but I just want to make sure that it makes sense to staff, what the direction is here, so that it's clear to them how to go forth and implement that. Because what you stated feels a little bit broad, again, I think there are some, probably some specific tasks under that, but it's, that's a big undertaking to look at every city process, and, you know, what you mean by documentation. I think there's, again, given some of the limited time we had to have some of those conversations, it feels like there needs, maybe we need to elaborate on it a little bit more, so that it's, so that it's really clear and it is achievable by staff.
Yeah, and even if we start small and start with just with our planning department, because that, you know, when people are building things, or they're opening businesses, just having that documentation so that there's follow-up, because that seems to be, from my experience of watching council meetings and being a part of the Blinding Commission, that seems to be where a lot of the issues were, or the confusion was for the residents. And I just think that part of communication, and that being one of our goals, that we're, that we're proposing to implement, is that we are able to show them that, hey, we listen to you when this big, when all these big issues have come up, and we're really going to focus on it, and we're going to be specifically calling out these, these major, what I see as, as problems that need to be fixed.
Okay, so, so you're referring specifically to process improvement in documenting decisions related to planning and development?
Yes.
Is that, is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sarah?
Yes.
Excuse me, this has been an interesting dialogue here between you two, but for the rest of the council, if anyone listens to the city manager for more than five or 10 minutes, he's always talking about best practices. It's not a new or bizarre or strange idea, it's always up front. And I think we need to recognize that.
I do recognize that.
Now, go ahead, you want to jump back in on this?
No, I do recognize that, but also talking about it and implementing it are two different things, and I would like to see it implemented also.
Well, I think it gets implemented every day, but I guess we can have differences of opinion.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
What, go ahead.
So, going back to the improvement of the small business development processes, I certainly feel like that is a big deal, but do I understand, Counselor Hook, that you want to make that its own separate goal? Or were you, so when I was looking at these, it looked to me like the improved communication and outreach, that goal and the improved, the processes, kind of got meshed together. And, I see what you're saying about that one being left out, and I do agree, like I said, that that is a big, that is something that we wanted to touch on. So can it be a sub? Because I see what you're saying, that it does, I'm sorry, not finishing my thoughts here, but I think what happened when you got together with staff was, we had these, and then you kind of took the sticky notes and said, okay, we can compile these together, and like this one, we had it under city processes, but it could also go under this category. And I think maybe, like you were saying, that's what got lost in translation, of where did these things go? And that wasn't communicated very well to us about, okay, we still, we recognize that these are important to you, but this is where that went, it went under this category. So in our, we're just kind of tagging this and saying, okay, under the development, the economic strategies, that that is an important thing that we want to focus on. Is that?
Yeah, no, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I think that it can fit in the goals. I don't really care where it goes, as long as it is called out, and that it's something that we focus on. So wherever that is, I would defer to, you know, city staff or you to figure out where that is, just as long as it's clear.
And so you're saying those two specific things are, out of the things that you felt were missing, are things that we need to make sure are.
Yeah, those were the major things that I didn't feel were incorporated into somewhere else, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, as I see it.
Counselor.
Thank you. It's a pretty aggressive set of goals, short-term, midterm, long-term, this is a lot, and I feel like kind of what we've done is sort of a brain dump, of all of the things that we think we would want to undertake, that we'd want the staff to undertake. Great, and I thought it was good work, but it's a lot. And where I think that we need to have this additional conversation is, what is actually possible? And maybe, so if, you know, Counselor Hook or Counselor Patty want to add something to this, to continue that, you know, kind of brain dump, at some point, we need to prioritize what is actually possible, just like any project management or portfolio management, we've got to look at what's possible for implementation within these time constraints. That's the concern I have, is looking at this, this is a lot to ask any group to take on and actually accomplish successfully. So I feel like there's maybe another conversation, once we get to the point of what all the different goals are, but maybe taking some things off and having that real conversation about, well, this is important to me, well, this is important to me, great, but as a council, and I don't know if that's an executive session to do that in, or if that's here in council, but I feel like that, that's the next step. And so my question to you is this, is that typically what a council would do in this situation?
So, how I've seen this work is, in most of these sessions, it can, I just was having a conversation with the group I worked with last weekend about how, you know, they feel like it's, it's a lot that councils want to achieve, and because they want the best for their community. It's all well-intended. And that's why, going back and having some discussions with staff as far as what's realistic, when we sat down and talked about the one to two-year goals, for example, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it felt like a good place to put that streamlined business development process, because that's something that's going to come up during the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it's already happening. That's already slated to be worked on, and so it felt achievable to staff. So the way things got prioritized in these short-term, midterm, long-term, that, this felt realistic to staff. And I encourage councils to look at these goals, you know, some do it once a year, some do it every two years, and make updates, you know, you give staff a chance to come back and report progress on these things, but ultimately, staff is the one who takes these actions and these goals, and really scopes it, and comes back to council and says, this is how we're moving this goal forward, you know, we heard you at the retreat what you wanted to do, and, and this is the plan that we're, you know, this is how we're going to move it, move it ahead. Another place where council has an opportunity to influence how these goals progress forward is during the budget process. That's one of the most important policy decisions you guys make of the year, and so how you allocate your resources is another way that you exercise what your priorities are. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Mayor, one quick follow-up.
Sure.
So, you nailed it, right? So we're going to ask for the moon, right? As sort of that customer in this big process, I feel like there's pressure on staff to try to manage all of that stuff that we're asking them to do, and if we add stuff on, part of Project Management 101, or managing a portfolio like this, you, someone has to come back and say, this is cool that you, as the counselors, decided that you wanted this additional thing in there, but what's going to come off?
Right.
Right? And I guess that's the conversation for city council is, or for me at least, understanding the processes, do we do that here, or do we do that in an executive session?
A work session.
A work session, yeah, work session, most likely, yeah.
And, and you can, I mean, if you want to change what's in here. And, and you can, I mean, if you want to change what's in here, yeah, I would encourage you to maybe do it during a work session. But again, this is, this is meant to provide, council goals are meant to provide direction to staff. I, I would discourage you from, you know, spending too much time wordsmithing it. I think if there are things that are really important to the group, as, as was, you know, stated tonight, and they need some elevated importance, you know, we should fix that. But to sit in a work session and spend too much time wordsmithing it, I would say that that's kind of getting in the weeds a little bit. You, as elected officials, you're, again, we talked a little bit about roles and I know some of you guys did the elected officials training that the league offers. But, you know, trying to stay at that spot of like directing policy and letting staff, you know, do the, the implementation piece of it, it's, it's hard to juggle that, right? They're your project managers, they're the folks that you hire, they're the professionals. So sometimes because of our roles as, as professionals in various fields, it's really easy for elected officials to kind of start to steer towards that. And, and really that's why you have the, the team that you hired and the professional folks that you do. It's, that's where they're.
Mr. Mayor, one more quick, one more quick.
Yeah, please.
Totally agree. What I'm, what I'm worried about with that is that if decisions are made, and I, and I do believe that the onus does belong on staff to make the decisions about what goes on here once we've done that brain dump. I think we, as city council, need to understand exactly what you just said, which is that dialogue, that trust, that responsibility falls on them. And that, you know, it is too much in the weeds for us to get into. And, and I think that, that trust in city staff has to exist for that to happen.
Exactly.
And I, and I do believe that that's the right level. That's my final comment.
All right.
I promise.
No, it's, it's, it's good conversation and it's conversations that, you know, cities across the state have. They, they struggle with the same thing. So other questions or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So to Chris's point, when you all were going over these goals and you did, I just want to clarify, when you were, you were kind of putting them where they went, Keith, this may be a question for you, but were, did this feel like this, you know, was something that we could attain? Or are we asking too much in these? Because I don't, that's, you know, something that we don't want to do. Obviously, like you said, in the budget process, that's one way that we can kind of go back to these and say, what are our priorities? But are we asking too much here?
I think we had conversations about this and it's, it's why this broke into, you know, the short-term, one to two-year goals, the midterm, three to four-year goals, and the long-term, you know, five-year goals. I do think, honestly, this is pretty aggressive. But at the same time, I think a staff should be willing to, to try to be aggressive and try to be willing to, to really try to, to be proactive and to, to be aggressive in trying to move forward, especially with a new council, a council that has ideas and visions of what they want to accomplish. And I think all of us felt like this was something that was obtainable. I do think, you know, in my mind, talking, and Sarah, you can, you have experienced this, you disagree, I think some of these things aren't getting into council goals, they're getting into expectations you would set on your city manager and then on your, your staff as, as well, right? So the expectation's on me, and we talk about benchmarking our processes and procedures, is to show that we are, I am as, or whoever is your city manager, is doing those things to show that we are following best practices, that we are meeting the standards and expectations, that we are a benchmark-type community. I've, I have talked a long time and, and there are examples out there, but we have tried to, regardless of our size, to, to do things that any size community in the country would look at and be as a benchmark to us. And those things take time, changing cultures take time and energy. And it's never just as simple as we're going to implement something and everything is magical and, you know, challenges or controversy. But, but this is what I think some of the expectations would move towards, not necessarily council goals, but your expectations on the staff that you have, specifically the city manager that you have, and then them following through with the staff to make sure those are met.
Okay. And, oh, sorry, Paige. Anyway, I want to talk. One more question.
Ms. Ort.
Yes.
Were you part of this process?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Were you, were you there, were you there at this, at this meeting in February?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wondered, from your questions, like this, this thing that, that.
I'm just asking some clarifying questions, maybe for the folks that weren't there. Were you all there? Okay. One more question. So you had mentioned that city councilors come back and revisit their goals. So what does that look like? Does that happen in a work session or at a city council meeting? Or just a quick, so how does that look when we revisit these to, to see where we're at with them?
You mean like in, like a year or?
Yeah, I guess you said a year or two years. I said six months, but yeah, so a year or two years.
Definitely annually, whether you hire, whether you hire a facilitator to come back and look at them with you, or if you just do it like as part of an annual work session, that's, I mean, that happens. I could share several examples of cities that I think do a really nice job of, of carrying out that process. But yeah, I, usually a presentation comes forth from staff, kind of sharing an annual progress report. Sometimes it happens with mayors as like a state of the city type thing, or, you know, some, some elected officials like to deliver some sort of state of the city where they're like, we set out to do all these goals and, you know, here's, here are some of the accomplishments we've achieved. And sometimes you do find that challenges come up or, or other issues that you weren't anticipating that require attention and resources. And so there may be some things that get shifted. And so you revisit those and say, all right, well, that maybe got pushed off last year, but it's still really important to the community. And so you put it back on. So again, it's meant to be, it's meant to be flexible, right? Because you have to be flexible. You're, it's not, not every, as you know, not every meeting and every decision's always cut and dry. But I think what staff is typically looking for is, is good direction. And I think that we did some really good work on the second. And so I think you guys provided some, you guys are ambitious, you're progressive in your thinking, and you provide it some really great direction. I think you have a really motivated staff that if there's good trust there and good collaboration, you guys are going to do really well in, in implementing these things. So, but let's get it right. I do want to make sure that we, we address some of the concerns you have and that the language feels, feels relevant and feels good to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor.
Folks, we've got a, we're supposed to have a council decision on this tonight. So we're into deliberation now, but if you've got questions, let's do it and let's move on, if we can. Go ahead.
I can wait till deliberation. It's fine.
Well, that's what we're in.
Okay. She was up there standing there still, so I wasn't sure if we were still doing questions or deliberation.
Thank you again, Sarah.
Thank you.
Unless the council has more questions for you, but go ahead, you're on.
So I wanted to say that I really liked what Keith had to say about that, about being aggressive. And I want to make sure that it, that it's, that you guys understand that I appreciate the work that you do. And when, when we set, for me, when I think of setting goals, I, I think of striving for excellence, not perfection. You're not going to hit every single goal every time. But that we should also make sure that our goals, this nice beautiful document is probably going to go on our website for the community to see. It definitely needs to communicate that we've been listening, that we've heard them, and that, that we're going to work on improving things. Now, whether that's something that, you know, the city manager would, would work on, that's great, but let's have that messaging in here so that they understand that, that we heard them. Because that's kind of the, that's kind of the, the role that, that we've taken on as councilors is, is to hear the community and make sure that we're fighting for them and working with the city staff and, and putting realistic expectations and understanding they're not going to hit every goal every time and we're not going to, you know, get after them, you know, two years down the road when they're only halfway through the two-year goal. Because, I mean, they're making forward progress. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that I'm not, I don't expect perfection. I just, and I really liked that, that Keith said that he, he thinks that the city staff can be aggressive. Because I, I agree with that. They, they are great.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Other discussion? Want to go into a decision? We need a motion, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My motion to adopt the 2019 through 2023 city goals as presented.
Okay.
Second.
And a motion and a second to adopt the 2019, 2023 city council goals as presented. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I would really like to see just a little bit more detail put into some of the things that are already in there, just with those two points that I had made about the, the business, the small business processes and documentation processes and follow-through with the planning stuff, so.
Do we think that those things can be achieved under the goals as written, though? I mean, what I'm hearing, it sounds like that's an objective of city staff, those things that we want. I know they know that we want them. I trust that they will execute.
My concern's more the messaging to the community. That's really, I understand the staff, that the staff understands what we want, just that the community understands that that was what was incorporated. Because people aren't going to come back to this meeting and watch it on, on YouTube.
All right.
So, so, um, under, yes, sir. Under the economic development strategies, the short-term goal, can we, so we have the marketing, urban renewal and infrastructure, infrastructure improvements, can we add small business development process improvements? We add, add a line there?
I've got a motion on the floor to adopt the goals as presented.
Okay.
Is there not a way for us to like amend that motion or, I mean, I think that the person that?
We can drag this out all night if you want.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking a question because I don't understand the, the process for this, so I just wanted clarification.
And I said, we can drag this out all night if you want, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Councilor Hook, the, the motion, to answer your question, we need to vote on the, on the motion on the table. And if there's not sufficient votes to pass it, then we can discuss the next step.
Thank you, Councilor Quigley.
All right. If there's no other discussion, Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Yes. Councilor Ort, no. Councilor Hook, no. Councilor Patty?
Yes.
Councilor Quigley?
Yes.
Councilor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Three to two, okay. Okay, moving right along. Ordinance number 1029, amending land use code establishing standards for recreational vehicle parts and campgrounds. And Mr. Fleischman, please.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The issue before you this evening is the second consideration of ordinance 1029, which would enact legislative amendments to the land use and development code establishing development and operational standards for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, as well as making a, a few minor changes to the definitions of recreational vehicle and the standards for off-street parking in the residential zones. You may recall that at your last meeting, you held a public hearing on the proposed changes. You have closed the record on that public hearing and you approved the first consideration of the ordinance, but requested two changes. Those changes were to require that parking spaces be provided adjacent to community building in a RV park and to require that the park management keep records of guest registration and make those records available for inspection by city staff. Those changes have been incorporated into the revised draft of the ordinance that you have in front of you. I believe that the council received an email from the city attorney. There was testimony at your public hearing that questioned whether the city had the legal ability to regulate the length of stay in RV parks. We consulted with the city attorney on this matter and their reply in part was that the city does have the authority to limit the length of occupancy in an RV park and noted that the state's landlord-tenant act specifically exempts vacation occupancy from the statute. The city attorney also noted that the proposed 180-day limit on stays may be excessive if you want to assure that RV parks are not used for residential purposes. The original discussions among the planning commission talked about 120-day limit and actually did not require that a site be vacated, but did, the original drafts would have required that a, that a unit be, shall we say, more, more securely installed and not be connected with a flexible garden hose or flexible sewage drainage pipe, not have a plug in electrical connection if they were there for more than 120 days. Before forwarding the ordinance to the council, the planning commission decided to, to change that as a result of testimony at their public hearing and went with the 180-day limit. The council may want to consider an amendment to the ordinance, a further amendment to the ordinance to shorten the allowable length of stay to between 90 and 120 days if you have concerns about long-term occupancy and, and the resident, RV parks becoming residential in nature. So with that, the council's presented with the following options, to approve the second consideration of ordinance, what, 1029 as presented, or to approve the, approve the ordinance with further modifications.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Let's go ahead with discussion on this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to change the 180 days currently, cut that in half and make it 90 days.
Okay.
So if you want that in the motion, I'll be glad to get one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Counselor. Could you explain that a little bit, what your rationale is on that one?
Yeah, again, it goes to the vacation aspect of it or the RV aspect of the park. And try not to have people live there as a permanent residence or as an, as an alternative to a permanent residence. I'm even willing to do 120 days, but I think the 90 days, from my standpoint, three months is a lot better than having 180 days.
So my thinking is the 90 days may be limiting if somebody's there for some sort of, not necessarily sustained living situation, but a vacation or, you know, prolonged hunting season, I don't know. That's kind of where I'm coming down in reading this. And to me, the 120 days seems like a pretty good, pretty good compromise. What do you guys think?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I agree with Counselor Quigley, but I'm also okay with 120 if that's where everyone else is comfortable with. I'm good with that.
Dan, is, is it appropriate or okay for us to present Mr. Jones's application, I mean, his thinking on this limited stay? If not, I won't.
It's not appropriate because that would essentially be introducing information that was not part of the record.
And the hearing's closed, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
We won't do any of that, please.
So with the, just changing the days, are we still changing, we're going to keep the language that says you, you can stay for 120, you have to leave and then you could come back essentially if you?
Everything else would, yeah, it's just the limited stay would, would change. Everything else would be the same.
Okay.
Yeah. So, something about, we need the ordinance modified.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm fine with it, Mr. Mayor, as well.
I'd like to offer.
Just for the record.
Work down the list, down the line.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve the ordinance with changing the limit of 180 days to 120 days, that modification.
Second.
And a second, a motion and a second. Chris, did you offer, want to offer something there?
I did not. I, I got it on the record, so we're okay.
So I've got a motion to approve the ordinance, this is ordinance 1029.
Okay, I just, Mr. Mayor, just a clarifying question. So we, we made amendments to it, the, the changes, the one and two on here. And so just clarifying, those are added on there and then we're changing the dates, the days to 120.
The previous modification, is that what you're asking?
It's just a modification, change the time.
The newest modification, what you're asking is, yeah, the newest modification is the 120 days.
Yes.
And the two that were previous there from last time still carry over.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I have an ordinance. Okay, I have an ordinance then, go ahead and read it, I think. Approve the ordinance ten twenty-nine with modifications, and there are, what, three of them?
Two.
The days, one-hundred-and-twenty, from one-eighty to one-twenty.
Effectively one, Mr. Mayor, from...
Effectively one.
Yeah, is that right, Dan? From the ones that were carried over from last time, we're assuming are already in there.
The revised draft ordinance that you have in front of you...
Okay.
Includes the two changes that were requested at your last meeting.
Okay.
The motion, as I understand it, was to further revise the ordinance, to change one-hundred-and-eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty days.
Correct.
Okay. Does that mean it has to come back again?
I do not believe so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other discussion, folks, on this one? Let's go to a vote, then. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Of course. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, folks, okay. New business tonight, finally, we're getting to it after an hour and fifteen minutes. Report of ordinance number ten nineteen, review committee, and recommended code amendments. Mr. Fleishman?
Yeah, hold on while I gather my papers in the right order here.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm too fast.
Before he does, I have two pieces of housekeeping on that one. Actually, the options for the council, except recommendations of ordinance nineteen nineteen, that's not correct, as we know, it's ten nineteen.
Yes.
And in the body of the statement, it also says, staff recommends adoption of ordinance ten twenty-nine. That's the one we just did, so let's change that to ten nineteen as well.
I'm just making sure, paying attention, huh?
Yeah. Somebody's got those numbers, all right. Okay, Dan, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So, the issue before you is receipt of the report from the ordinance ten nineteen review committee. This was a committee the council appointed back in the winter to look at ordinance ten nineteen, which was enacted back in, when was that? It was in June of two thousand and eighteen that the ordinance, no, it was, yeah, in early June of two thousand and eighteen is when the ordinance was passed. Ordinance ten nineteen, for background for the members of the council who were not sitting at that time, ordinance ten nineteen essentially enacted a new chapter in the city code on the maintenance of non-residential buildings, and it amended two existing chapters of code. The first section of the ordinance required that people pick up pet waste, and was applicable throughout the city. The second section of the ordinance prohibited smoking or vaping outside the front street facade of any building in the downtown area. And the third section enacted standards for the maintenance of non-residential properties in the downtown area, and that essentially required that property owners keep the property and the area in front of the property free from debris, trash, and other materials, that weeds be removed from the front of buildings and landscaped areas, and that awnings be kept in good repair, moss-free, and be illuminated. Shortly after the ordinance was enacted, the city council began to have visitors who made comments beginning of the meeting, that were, I think exclusively focused on the smoking As a result of the number of comments that were received, eventually, the council scheduled a public hearing. There was an evening of testimony, both in favor and against various provisions of the ordinance, and as a result of that, the council decided to create this committee to look into it. The committee was appointed with thirteen members. They represented property owners in the downtown area, business owners in the downtown area, representatives of revitalized downtown staten, business employees, and there were two people appointed as alternate members. The committee was chaired by Counselor Quigley. They met on three different occasions, and I don't know whether staffing is the right word, they were assisted by myself and by Police Chief Seabans. They reviewed the entire ordinance, and they have made a number of recommendations. And you have in the packet a memo from them, in addition to my memo, that describes their process. Their recommendations can be broken down between amendments to the code, as well as they have made two recommendations that are not code-related. So the code amendments that the committee has recommended to you are, one, that the non-residential property maintenance requirements that were adopted in ordinance ten nineteen be applied citywide, not just to the downtown area. That if, their limited scope is keeping your property trash-free and weed-free, keeping your awnings clean and in good repair, that those are standards that should apply citywide. Secondly, as I said, ordinance ten nineteen prohibited smoking outside the front street facade of a building. State law prohibits smoking within ten feet of the doorway, or any window that can be opened at a non-residential property. The committee's recommendation is to amend the code to prohibit smoking on a public sidewalk of a street, within twenty feet of the doorway of any business establishment in the city, and would also prohibit placing ashtrays or butt collectors within twenty feet of a doorway on a sidewalk of a public street. And I stress the "on the sidewalk of a public street" because of the comment that you heard earlier this morning about the impact on the alley. Since that's an alley, and there is no sidewalk, the twenty-foot restriction would not apply to the rear door of a business. It only, as proposed by the committee, only applies to activity on the sidewalk of a public street.
Can you repeat that?
As proposed by the committee, the smoking prohibition only applies on the sidewalk of a public street. And what the committee has recommended is to expand the requirement of state law that says no smoking within ten feet of a doorway, to say, within twenty feet of a doorway on the sidewalk of a public street. So therefore, it would not impact the back door of a business that faces an alley. It would not impact, for instance, the doorways at Roth's or Beymar, which are located hundreds of feet from the sidewalk of a public street. There is a paved pedestrian walkway in front of those, but that's on private property. It's not the sidewalk of a public street. State law would still apply as to where you can smoke adjacent to those doorways, but this city, as written by the committee, the proposed code would not impact businesses that don't have doorways adjacent to a sidewalk on a public street. Thirdly, ordinance ten nineteen established standards for the maintenance of awning. Committee was concerned that the code was too vague, and has proposed alternative language for awning maintenance. Ten nineteen enacted in the code requirements to that awnings have illumination to the sidewalk. The committee recommended this provision be repealed and replaced with the requirement that all building facades or interiors be illuminated. And finally, regarding awnings, the committee recommended that if an awning is removed, the entire frame and any supports also be removed, so that we don't have a naked awning frame hanging out there over the sidewalk. The only maintenance provisions that the committee recommends apply only in the downtown area is the requirement for building illumination. As written by the committee, that requirement would apply to buildings along North Third Avenue, between East Water Street and East Burnett Street, which is where predominantly have buildings that front right on the sidewalk. The committee has proposed that several options be allowed for illumination, which would include the illumination of the interior of the building, provided it's visible from the exterior. It could be lights strung along the perimeter of windows, or lights, just exterior lighting, or lights in an awning. The amendments do specify the light needs to be a minimum of a thousand lumens, which is equivalent to like a twelve-watt LED bulb, or it's equivalent to about a seventy or seventy-five watt incandescent bulb, for those of us who think that way of how bright a light bulb is. And have a temperature rating, which refers not to how hot it feels when you touch it, but what shade of white it is when you look at it, a temperature rating of five thousand K or less, which is a warmer light that is, tends more towards yellow than a cooler white, which tends more towards blue. You've got the committee's recommendations for the code amendments attached, and as I said earlier, the committee also has other recommendations that are not code-related. The committee unanimously agreed to recommend that the city establish a designated smoking area in the city-owned parking lot behind North Third Avenue. The committee noted that the parking lot's not heavily used, and the dedication of one parking space as a smoking area would not impact the supply of parking compared to the demand for spaces. In addition, while the committee was composed of people with a variety of interest in the downtown area, because their recommendations would apply many of the standards that currently apply only downtown citywide, because of the lack of adequate public notice and public participation prior to the enactment of ordinance ten nineteen, the committee strongly recommends that, prior to consideration of implementing any of these recommendations, that the city council widely publicize them and get public input into them, so that we don't end up with a similar situation as we have found ourselves in with the ordinance ten nineteen. With that, staff has two concerns with recommendations from the committee. The first is with the dedicated parking space in the municipal parking lot behind the two-hundred block of North Third Ave. That is, as we presented to you several meetings ago, we will soon be restriping the on-street parking, so that we are not designating parking spaces on the street that are in violation of state law. That will result in a loss in the total downtown, whole downtown area of about seventy to seventy-five parking spaces. So we are concerned that losing one more space of off-street parking, that the loss of those on-street parking may result in greater demand for off-street parking. Secondly, we are concerned that there would be, such a designated smoking area would primarily benefit one business, and are concerned about how public resources be used in a way that would benefit private concerns. And thirdly, the council has previously, by resolution, voted to join the Healthy Eating Active Living Community, and questioned whether facilitating tobacco use is something the city should be participating in and facilitating. Secondly, just want to, staff wants to heartily second the committee's recommendation about public process, notice, participation, as you consider these recommendations. So this is not an ordinance presented to you for action tonight. This is just the report of the committee and the staff's analysis of that report. The options that you've been presented with are to accept the recommendation, and therefore direct staff to begin a public notice process regarding proposed code amendments, or to accept the recommendations from the committee just for the code amendments, or to maintain the code unchanged.
Okay.
And with that, I'll attempt to answer any questions you may have. Chair of the committee is here, and he may be able to also answer some questions.
Thank you, Dan. Under discussion.
And it looks like we have, I believe, just one committee member here this evening.
Okay.
No, Penny and I.
Two? Okay.
Oh, three. Right, right.
My halter, that's okay. So, under discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel of deliberation. Questions? Who wants to start?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Dan, I have a question. Is there an option for us to accept the recommendations of ordinance ten nineteen review committee with modifications? Like, can we, is that something that can be done? Or do we just have to accept it or not accept it?
Well, I don't, you can't modify their recommendations, but you can accept their recommendations, and in directing staff, tell us what changes, if you're talking about the code portions of it, what changes you'd like to see, and we can incorporate those when we come back with an ordinance, or when we are making proposals for whatever public notice and participation that we come up with.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't want to speak on behalf of RDS, and maybe Mr. Poizan can, but it was Chris Leclerc pointed out to me by Mr. Meyer that they were not in favor of having this go, these recommendations, this ordinance, go anywhere outside of downtown. So just FYI.
Mr. Mayor?
That's RDS itself, not the committee.
This is...
Counselor Quigley?
We're under counsel of deliberation, Steve, otherwise I might exercise some latitude, but we're going to keep it in the house here.
I mean, Counselor Patty was there when that statement was made at the committee, so.
So you're saying that they do not want this to go to a point...
Only RDS, that was RDS's desire, was not to have this go anywhere other than outside. Their intent was, when this first thing started, was for the downtown improvement. They just wanted that to be known, that that's what their intent was initially, and how it got to the committee recommendation of going citywide, you know, that's...
Was from the committee?
Correct.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Other questions and thoughts?
My thought is, if, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Patty.
Is that if, you know, learning from the mistakes of one year ago, perhaps there should be more community buy-in in any ordinance that impacts the entire town. And while it's wonderful that there were that many people from the downtown community there in the review committee, perhaps we need more members to be able to submit some sort of amendments to the code.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One of the consensus from that group was that they really enjoyed to be able to participate in it, have say in the ordinance, and they'd like to see that, that type of committee, not necessarily those same folks, but that type of committee be a permanent thing to review these types of issues when they come forward to council, prior to... thing to review these types of issues when they come before the council, prior to coming before the council.
I'd heard that idea as well, Mr. Mayor. I thought that was great. I thought that was perfect.
I like that community involvement. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Dan.
Counselor?
Do we know, when looking at cities who are looking at or have banned smoking in their downtown areas, I understand that Mickey and Moms is in a special situation, especially in our downtown, but what are other cities doing with businesses like this? Or not even banning smoking altogether, but with the 10-foot regulation, the Oregon, just the state regulation, what, do we know or have we looked into, are there options for places, for businesses? I apologize to not give him this question ahead of time, so.
I have not done that research. I'm not even quite sure how many other communities in Oregon have taken the step of regulating smoking beyond the state law.
So not even beyond the state law, but just in compliance with the state law? In a situation like this, what are other communities doing to mitigate this issue with businesses?
The only community that I've heard about that's done anything, and I've only heard about it, I have not looked into what they've done, whether they've actually done this or not, is that I've been told that there's a place in downtown Eugene that the city has sort of set up a, for lack of a better term, a smoking kiosk, where people can be undercover and use tobacco. I haven't seen it, I don't know whether the city did it, or whether a downtown association did it, or whatnot. That's the only thing that I've heard about.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
Chief, this is for you. So if we extend the state regulation of the 10 feet to the 20 feet, who enforces that and how does that get enforced?
The 10 feet gets enforced by the public, the state health department. They have people that respond out for those. Once it goes beyond the 10 feet and it becomes city code, then it gets enforced by the city. And it would fall probably similar to what, how the parks are enforced, is that it's not actively sought out to enforce it, just because of staffing and manpower. Now, if we had a complaint where if it was a particular business, somebody called and said, hey, this is a regular problem down here at this particular location, whether it be downtown or wherever it's at, then we would send, one of the code enforcement officers would go over there and address the ongoing issue. But with staffing and higher priority calls, the officers aren't going to be driving along and stopping and citing smokers.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts? Go ahead, please.
So first, I just wanted to say that I love the change in conversation that has happened between RDS and the business that's been affected. I think it's great that they came up with a solution for this. I wanted to point out that Salem has government property that has garbage receptacles that have places for depositing cigarettes on government property. I wanted that to be clear. And I think that we can find a solution here that, and maybe even expand it, so that there's more places, because we can't stop people from smoking, and we shouldn't be telling them what to do with their personal choice, but we should make sure that we're following state law, and that when we make policies, that we are protecting the health of others as well. So I would love to see us stick with the 10-foot, mainly because we don't want to burden our police department and create an expectation that they would be enforcing it when they wouldn't be. We just don't have the resources for that. And then just implement ways that we can provide a place so that we don't just have people smoking anyway and throwing them on the ground. So that's just what I feel. So I would love to see it changed from 20 feet to 10 feet, and find additional places and accept the recommendation from them as it is otherwise.
Mr. Mayor?
Another statement?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Dan, do we have other ordinances, forgive me that I don't know this, but do we have other ordinances that address debris and weeds and plants, overgrowth, things like that? Do we have other things in place that are specific to, because in here, it's going not just to the downtown, correct? That piece is, that, expanding to the whole town? Am I correct? Or did I understand, did I misunderstand that?
The provisions of the non-residential property maintenance, as enacted by Ordinance 1019, apply only in the downtown area.
Okay.
The recommendation from the committee is to have them apply citywide. There is, other than this Chapter 1512 about non-residential property maintenance, in the city's nuisance code, in Title 4?
Eight.
Title eight of the city code, there is provisions about weed control, but they say you can't have weeds taller than, I believe it's 10 inches in height. It also applies to the grass in your lawn, you have to keep it mowed to at least 10 inches in height. They list, and you may not allow weeds to go to seed, as opposed to keep the front of your buildings weed, your commercial building weed-free.
Any other discussion, or can we go to an option here?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more question. If I recall, Dan, when the issue of the awnings was, came up previously, there were some downtown property owners, and not necessarily business owners, but the property owners that were having an issue with this particular part of the bill. Did anyone bring up these concerns during your, in the committee?
Yes. Two property owners downtown actually addressed the awning issue.
What did they say?
They made their recommendations that you have here.
Okay.
To take it down altogether when a piece is missing, and something about the internal lighting.
That, and the third...
As a different option?
Right. So, a year ago, when this issue was first being brought before council, there were actually two different ordinances that were presented that dealt with awnings. One was Ordinance 1019, and I'm not going to remember the number of the other one, but it doesn't matter what the number was. But the other was amendments to the land use code. And the reason, and they have similar provisions regarding maintenance and lighting, but the reason there were two different ordinances addressing two different titles of code is that the land use code, Title 17, has a provision in it that says, if we change the code and make what you have in place today not legal, you can continue to do it anyway.
Grandfather did.
So if you have a dirty, torn awning in place when we change the land use code that says awnings need to be kept clean and in good repair, then under the land use code, we don't have a mechanism to cause a property owner to clean and repair their awning. So that's why it was also put into Title 5, this new chapter of 512, because we wanted a mechanism to take care of the existing issues.
Okay.
So, as Counselor Quigley said, I think probably the more vocal critics of the awning standard were on the committee.
Okay.
Fair.
And were very involved in drafting the language, coming up with the language that addressed their concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, here we go. We've got a choice here. Council's presented with some options, accept recommendations of Ordinance 1019 Review Committee, accept the recommendations of the Ordinance Review Committee for code amendments, or maintain the municipal code unchanged. What would you folks like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
In order for us to take any action, we need to either accept or decline the recommendations of the committee. Having been on that committee, they did a lot of work on this, and so I move that we accept the recommendations from the committee, and then we let it get to the next forum and go from there.
Seconded.
All right. So a motion and a second. This is option one, right?
Sure.
Yeah. This is first one.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We're in discussion. Motion and a second to accept the recommendations of the Ordinance 1019 Review Committee. Under discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Anybody?
Yeah. So I think what I'm understanding, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, we're just saying, yes, let's drop this up as they presented it, and then it comes back to us, and then we can make additional modifications. Great.
Yep.
Sounds good.
It'll come back, and, Dan, you're thinking July?
Well, I guess that depends on, yeah, it probably won't be before July if we're going to do effective publicity about the proposed changes. I would urge this council, unlike the previous council, to hold a public hearing, even though statutorily you don't need to do one. And so, but, you know, considering that this is April, May is filled with budget stuff, June's agenda's probably pretty full, it would probably be July before we get this to you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Yes. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Five to zero, good. Okay, thank you. And thank you, folks, for bearing with us as we go an hour and a half into this. Next, let's see, award of contract for 2019 Regis Street Improvement Project. Mr. Ludwig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last week, we had a couple of contracts that came in, bids came in for. I will start with the first. It was the Regis Street Improvement Project. We received three bids. The bid opening, and it was for the Regis Street Improvement, consisting of a mill and overlay of Regis Street from First Avenue to Evergreen, or to Gardner. It also includes some storm drainage improvements, and we're going to be replacing water services along Regis Street. Again, we had three contractors bid on this project. The low bidder was American Underground, and they came in at $512,235.61. The engineer's estimate for this was $647,000. That included a 20% contingency, so without the contingency, we were about $588,000, which is right in line where we were last year. So after researching this contracting firm, they're from Sublimity, they do work like that, and we've got a lot of, we probably had eight references from other cities in the area, Salem, Portland, other cities that they've done work for, highly recommended, although they've never done a street improvement before. But with those recommendations, we have decided we are recommending that we award that contract to American Underground. We've heard nothing but great compliments for them. They're a local company, and we'd like to, would like you guys to award that contract to them. Again, we had three. Knife River was the other one, and North San E M Paving was one. It was a pretty decent range. American Underground, again, was 512. North San E M was 536. They haven't been able to get a project from us in several years, but they were close this time. All that being said, city staff recommends you, the city council, award the bid to the low bidder, that being American Underground, at this time. Your options are obviously to award the contract to American Underground or reject all bids. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Lance. Is there a time limit on them finishing, whoever does this, finishing the project?
I generally like to have this done before the fiscal year ends, so middle of June.
Okay, so by 4th of July, that street would be usable?
That'll be done, yes.
Okay.
You'll have a place to ride in your car, yes.
Well, otherwise, the whole 4th of July parade is...
Well, I think...
Yeah. You have to think of these important things.
I think there's a hard deadline in there, June 14th. I thought it was.
I generally like to go to the middle of June. That gives them additional week, 10 days.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Patty?
Thank you. Lance, I'm curious, what other cities were providing the recommendations, the eight other cities you mentioned? This is just gee whiz curiosity speaking.
I don't follow the question.
So you mentioned there was eight different references for American Underground, correct?
I've never worked with them before.
Right.
And I've got a lot of experience in construction and engineering and putting out contracts. I mean, a lot of experience in the private and public sectors. Never heard of them. So before I decided I want to award them the contract, I want to reach out to other places, and I asked them for references. And they have nothing but impeccable references. Now, they don't do street projects, they do a lot of underground. They do private apartment, large apartment complexes where they have asphalt and paving. And the reason we decided to go with them as well is because they're subcontracting out the milling and overlay, and that's the big part of the project. Predominant size of the project is the milling and the overlay, and they're not even doing it. So Knife River is, feel very comfortable with that, and so that's why we brought the recommendation to you.
So Knife River is subcontracting underneath American Underground?
Yep. That's generally how it works.
Interesting.
Gee whiz. Well, that's fine. We still got the low bid, that's good. Okay, what would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Did you have a question? No, sorry.
I guess I did. I, being new to this realm, so when we're talking about these bids, they're all bidding on the same exact thing, like, they're...
That's correct.
Sometimes when you have contractors, they are like, well, I'm doing something a little different, and is that in your notes?
Counselor, if you look at the third sheet there, it has the bid opening...
You got it.
And it has the description. That pretty much entails what they're bidding on, although it'll be on like an Excel spreadsheet. Those things will be there, they bid on the exact same quantities. Now, if a contractor sees something that we're missing, we ask them to also submit a sheet saying what we're missing, and if they get the contract, the low bidder, and we award them, we'll work with them with that. But generally speaking, we like apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and everybody's bidding on the same thing. So that's the way we do it, to be fair. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Other thoughts? Can we go to a motion then, please? Or a bid award?
Because this was just, it was so well put together, I am fully comfortable making a motion to move toward the 2019 Regis Street Improvement Project to American Underground LLC in the amount of $512,235.61.
Seconded.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to award the 2019 Regis Street Improvement Project to American Underground Limited Liability Corporation in the amount of $512,235.61. Is there any discussion?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Lance, what amount of performance bond will they have to put up?
Since it's a city project, it'll be 100%. If it was a private project, private developer doing it, I'd ask for 125%. But we, you know, we're paying for it.
Okay.
Pretty assured that we're going to be able to make our pair of bills.
Okay. Anything else? Let's go to a voice vote on this and give it a try. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing done, we'll declare the motion passed five to zero, and that bid will be awarded. Mr. Ludwig, again, award of contract for water treatment plant, slow sand filter re-sanding project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last council meeting, myself and Andy Parks brought to you an issue that we had, the water treatment plant. At that time, I said that we had a contract out for that work, for sand filter bed number one. That bid also came in last Thursday, and that bid that we had... That bid also came in last Thursday, and that bid, we had several builders, let's see, we had four actual bidders on this project, and the low bid was $579,900. Again, my engineer's estimate was off there, and I've looked at that. I actually came in at $743,000, 20% contingency, so with that, I came in a little over in $618,000 or something like that, fairly close. I feel comfortable with that. All the bids, except for one, were within that $579 to $628,000. This contractor is out of Astoria. They have done work, this type of work, for over 20 years. They're currently doing the city of Astoria sand filter beds, they've done the city of Cannon Beaches, and they came out this very aggressively. They've worked, they know what they're doing, they're going to come in, they'll probably have it done in two weeks, which is very good, it's something that we need. They have a lot of good experience, I've had, again, a lot of good recommendations from the cities of Astoria and Cannon Beach. And so, with that, the public work staff is making the recommendation that we award the contract to Big River Construction for that bid amount of $579,900. And I will take any questions you have regarding that.
Thank you, Lance. Anything for Lance on that one?
I'm just speculating, no, I'm okay.
Mr. Mayor?
This is one of those surprise things that we would like not to have had to happen this year, right?
Yeah, I would, I'm right there with you.
And we're probably going to see an increase in water rates in the next little bit, aren't we?
That will be up to the city council, that's not up to the Public Works Director.
Be nice to be able to pay for these things, though, and, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Could I get a motion to award that contract, please? Yes.
I have a question, and it clearly isn't to Lance, but, you know, before awarding a contract, I'm curious, how are we going to pay for this? I'm not really comfortable saying, yeah, we're going to give you business if we don't even know how we're going to pay for it.
Well, I can, I can speak to that. We have over a million dollars of contingency each budget year in our water fund. So, just in our contingency alone, we can pay for this. I think Andy came last week, not so much as for this project, but for future maintenance. In the past, and I found this in just about every area in the public works realm, we've never really budgeted for capital improvements, staying with, maintaining what we have. We've never budgeted, it's five-year capital improvement project, projects, we've never done it. And so, what Andy came to you last week was said, if we're going to maintain these, this water filter beds, we've got three of them, we're going to have to budget for replacing sand every five years, every seven years. Never done it before. And what he's saying is, if we're going to do that, we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for it, which is exactly what you said. We can take care of this without raising rates, but looking to the future, we're going to have some hard questions to answer, and that'll be up to you folks to decide what we want to do.
Thank you so much for that. My anxiety level just went way down.
Well, that's one of us.
But I really, I really appreciate that you clarified that.
Thank you.
It's funny that Counsel Hook brings it up, because I'm pretty sure I asked him that question. I said, what's the contingency? And his answer to us was, we don't have any.
For future, now, I must, I could be misunderstood, but I've been working with him for the last six months on this project. He is looking at, because we need sand for three filter beds, not just this one.
Correct, maybe I didn't phrase it correctly.
And I know that we have projects that we can just not do this year that are forecasted and paid for.
Gotcha.
And that was my original proposal to him. He thought we could get by with contingency, but he's not here to answer that, so I don't really want to speak. I'm always a finance guy, I'm an engineer, I don't really want to step on his.
Mr. Mayor?
I think it's the way I probably phrase the question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I think a couple of things here, too, which is, it is, it's looking long-term. It's also, we have fiscal policies in place in terms of expectations of beginning fund balances, ending fund balances, and so, you know, keeping within what our policy is in terms of best practices in budgeting for each department, for each area that we have is another one of those things. I think it's lost the translation, it's something we need to talk about in this budget cycle, is what some of those things mean, what the value is, and why you don't want to see these funds come out of what we have set in the last three years as our fiscal policies for that. The second thing I do want to say is, the bids came in at a number that was better than sort of the doomsday scenario that we came last time. So, there's still some concerns here, and we're talking internally how to do that, but I agree, it's looking at that long-term, how we're going to fund bed two and bed three as those come forward, and doing that in a responsible way, in a way that makes sense, so.
I will say we are looking at that as well internally. Again, I believe what Keith said there was right on. We had to bring a doomsday scenario. I mean, this is the worst-case scenario, that we've got to spend $700,000 every other year for the next three years. We are looking at ways to try to clean the sand that we take out of there and reuse it. There are going to be some initial investment to do that, it's not going to be nearly as much as 750, but that's what we're going to be looking at in the future, so we don't have to go out and buy sand every five to seven years. We'd like to be able to reuse it. So, that's some of the things that we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you, Lance.
Mr. Mayor, not only that, but you also, thank you, sorry, you also mentioned that there's possible grant opportunities that we could seek out, and I'm highly motivated on that personally.
Keith and I spoke about that earlier today.
We had some of the conversation we had today, to look to see what kind of things.
That is terrific.
We've given you the doomsday scenario, and I've kind of told this privately, I'll say it publicly now, it's our job to figure out how we minimize that impact and the things that we can do. And we had a conversation about that starting today, and we have had a lot of conversations about other ways to make this less feasible. Well, we came to you saying, here's our worst-case scenario, and now let's see what we can do to make it a not-quite-so-doomsday scenario.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your guys.